Good afternoon, just checking in then. Can you all hear me?
Yes. Oh, we can hear you, yes, I can hear you. We'll go ahead and get started. I'll ask Commissioner Gonzalez to lead us in a prayer.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you this morning, this afternoon, first of all, with gratitude and thanking you for everything that you do for us. The blessings that we receive from you, Lord, we thank you for them every day. We thank you for keeping San Juan County safe from fires. We pray for the people that are dealing with fires right now. We pray for the people down in Rialdo so the tragedies that have taken place in our state, Lord. We ask that you come and comfort the people that have been affected. Lord, we ask you to come and be with us during this meeting, that we may be able to conduct business in the benefit of San Juan County. In Jesus's name we pray.
Commissioner McDaniel will lead us in the pledge, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll go ahead and go into the regular meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are none, the agenda is as presented.
All right, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that would approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, hearing none, motion carries. So I'll go ahead and read off the consent agenda. Number one, consideration of special meeting minutes for June 23, 2025. Number two, consideration of regular meeting minutes for July 1, 2025. Three, consideration of treasurer's check register for June 2025. Four, consideration of finance check register for June 2025. And five, consideration of FY 25 final quarter financial report resolution number 252615. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the five agenda consent items.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, hearing none, motion carries. So at this time, then I'm going to ask Mr. Svedra if he'll go ahead and come up to the microphone for our first update on the closed loop referral system, New Mexico Healthcare Authority.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, County Commission. I've come before you to introduce Mr. Roberto Martinez of the Healthcare Authority and Chris Duncan of Find Help. They'll be presenting a platform of Find Help for the closed referral system. And the system is designed to try to assist providers and individuals seeking services, and so there's no gaps in between. This is a service that is procured by the Healthcare Authority. And they have approached New Mexico counties and approached San Juan County on the system and the services that they're providing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Svedra, and welcome, Mr. Martinez and Mr. Duncan. Who would like to go first?
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you so much for the invitation to share a little bit of information around the statewide closed-loop referral system. Actually, before I continue, let me check that my audio is working okay, and can you all hear me well?
Yes, I hear you very well.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
So as introduced, my name is Robert Martinez. I work as a program manager for the Healthcare Authority for this particular project, which is called the statewide closed-loop referral system. I have a couple of, four slides I'd like to share with you, and then I'll pass it on to Chris Duncan, who is here with us, and he'll introduce himself at that point, just to show you a demo of what this platform can do. But the goal today really, from our point of view, is to continue to invite San Juan County to partner with the Healthcare Authority in like this statewide closed-loop referral system, reason why we are so extremely grateful for the invitation. So let me just share my screen here for a second, and before I continue, can you see my screen?
I see it.
Thank you. By definition, a closed-loop referral system, what it does is to help us understand a couple of things. One is, what are the gaps in services? What are the existing services that we currently have in New Mexico, and what are the gaps? But more importantly, once we have all these services listed in a database, in a platform, in an online platform, such as the closed-loop referral system, an individual can easily search in the platform and identify services that meets his or her needs. Additionally to that, a community-based organization in the county could look, say, like they are helping navigate services for an individual in the community, would look in the database, and through the database, not just a search, connect the individual with the services that they are needing. So the whole goal of this closed-loop referral system is to increase access to the existing services for New Mexicans, as well as to hopefully create more services as time goes by and we better understand the gaps. So where are we at? As you can see in the left corner, on the left corner of this slide, the brand for this initiative is called Yes New Mexico Connect. That is because HCA and other sister agencies of the government, like NMDOH, ECCD, have been working on a unified portal called Yes New Mexico. And this then closed-loop referral system is an enhancement to that Yes New Mexico site, and that's why the brand is Yes New Mexico Connect. In this roadmap that you're looking at, we are actually on number three. This is configuring the platform. As a matter of fact, the platform is live at the moment. So if we were to go to Yes New Mexico, there will be a link to go to Yes New Mexico Connect. And that's what we call the minimum viable product. What does that allows us to do? That allows us to hopefully, starting August, start moving into phase number four, onboarding organizations. What that means is that the Healthcare Authority, in partnership with Find Help, will be hosting a set of sessions at least twice a month for what we call the one-on-one skills, and then once a month for the one-on-two skills, meaning turning referrals on, and then also having office hours for organizations that can't do it on their own. So in other words, a lot of technical assistance to train community-based organizations across the state to be able to start that referral process. In this roadmap, this is like a little bit more specific. You will see that we're going to be working with Healthcare Authority programs, sister agencies like NMDOH, ALTSD, ECCD. We are really reaching out to all of the sister agencies. We are inviting counties and tribal government. The reason for that is because we have resources in our budget to cover the licenses for counties and tribal government. And we want to make sure that for a fiduciary responsibility, that we are coming to the counties to let them know what would be available to all of you if you all decided to participate in this process. And then also, of course, community-based organizations and trusted network. And that's what I was speaking about, that from August to about March of next year, we're going to be doing that onboarding of organizations with the goal of going live, meaning starting a marketing campaign to increase awareness among individuals in New Mexico to use the services. Two last slides before I pass it on to Chris, and perhaps actually do maybe a couple of minutes of questions before we go to Chris. But these are some of the organizations that we are already working with. Counties, we have actually seven counties that are participating, Doñana County, Luna County, hopefully San Juan County will have your support as well, Quake County, Socorro County, Sierra County, and Otero County. Additionally to that, we are exploring an initial pilot with two tribal communities, although we have licenses for all of the tribal communities across New Mexico, for, at no cost to them, as well as no cost to any of the counties. We are already having a pilot with Work for Solutions, it's going extremely well, and we anticipate that they're going to jump on board. UNMH is participating in two-on-ones and eight numbers. We are hopefully going to be launching with them as well. Four out of the four MCOs are going to be participating in this process, ALTSD, and we are reaching to other departments of the government. What we are hoping, what this image I'm hoping is communicating, is that there is a huge potential in our social services across New Mexico to be connected by this platform, which is the closed-loop referral system. Before I pass it to Chris, then I just want to reiterate, you know, we are very grateful for our ability and the invitation to come and to share where are we at with this project. We are hoping that this is going to increase social services access among New Mexicans, and there is no cost. There is quite a bit of technical assistance and support, and we are looking to counties as partners in this process that put you on the driver's seat, that would place the county as to decide how do they want to use this platform and implement the platform. We really want to listen to you all, and what makes sense to you all in the county, and see you as experts that know your community. So thank you, thank you so much. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'll pass it on to Chris, so he can show us a little bit of this tool and the power that it has. So Chris.
Mr. Martinez, this is Terry Fortner. I wanted to ask you a few questions about what you said, and maybe this is something that Chris will answer as well, and if so, I'll wait for that. But, so this connects the individual as well to the system?
Yes, as you'll see, and Chris is going to show us from an individual perspective, how to use this platform, as well as from a navigator, someone working in a community-based organization. But once I find a service, the individual will be able to refer himself or to be referred by someone else to those services, and the organization is going to receive that referral if the organization is participating in the program.
So it has to be a referral?
It has to be either a self-referral, like individuals can access themselves, or someone else referring.
Okay, I'll wait to ask the rest of the questions till after Mr. Duncan gets done.
Thank you. And I just brought the platform up right here, just to show what this looks like. So there is the ability to do electronic referral, but also, as you'll see, if I just put in a zip code here and conduct a search, you can see that folks can basically look for services via category, things like food, housing, transportation. Under health, we have things like, you know, mental health care as well and different resources there. So if I go into any one of those, I'm just going to go help pay for housing. And once I go in, it'll show me various resources that are available. So hopefully answering your question here, part of it is basically just getting the information together and getting the information right on what's available. We do have an in-house data curation team, that is their job. They work all day long, you know, five days a week, to make sure that this information is updated and that we're also adding programs, so that it's kept up to date. And also, a lot of the initial work we're doing with the counties we're working with currently is just to understand what they know about local services as well, to make sure that we have all the services possible that are listed there. Then you can see, you know, anything here from like an address, you know, hours of operations, you can call them. It's also very easy here that if you want to share this information, you can easily send this in an email or a text. So, you know, individual could send a text of themselves with this link, so they have it handy. Or, as you can imagine, it could be anything from like, say, a school counselor that's sending, you know, information to an individual, or you can think about this with like the justice-involved population, you know, folks that maybe are participating in one of your DUI programs and so forth, as well, sending this along to them. Let me pause there and see if that answered your question.
That's good so far, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. So we do want to make this easy for just individuals to look, to find on their own as well. But then also with the counties, we're providing them with their own staff-facing site, and I'm just going to show an example of what that might look like. So I know, and you know, in working with, you know, the different counties that are currently participating, you know, San Juan is one of those where they do have, and Doñana and several others, where they have a core group of nonprofits and other programs that they coordinate with on a regular basis. So they can receive inbound referrals from the system that are basically being referred into maybe a county program, and they can also make outbound referrals. So if they're, you know, working with an individual, they can go in here, and this is a demo site. But essentially, when I have that, I can click the refer button, and then I can go note of how, in this case, Sammy wants to be contacted, and make sure that I get consent, and then send that referral along. So part of the work that we're doing with the counties is to, you know, gather groups of organizations that are all serving individuals in that county, and getting them on the platform, so that they can then more easily send and refer back and forth to one another within that community as well. And if I go in on sort of the nonprofit or CBO side, all of the nonprofits or CBOs, or even you, whoever's providing these programs, we provide with free software as well, so that they can see inbound referrals that are coming into them. You know, who's been referred, they can get more information about that individual here, and they can also make an update on the referral status if they were able to provide help or not. This then will be reflected back to the individual that's making the referral, and also the individual that's being helped is always kept in the loop electronically as well on that. Any other questions on that?
I just had one that just comes to mind right now. How do you protect information? Information, how is HIPAA compliance done here?
Yeah, that's a great question. We are HIPAA compliant. That, and, you know, from a technology standpoint, we're making sure that that information is staying secure. And we do work with a lot of, you know, hospital systems and managed care organizations. So we have had to really invest heavily in security, which is the right thing to do, to make sure we're protecting this information. The other part of this is too, is that you do want to get the consent of an individual along the way to say, like, make an electronic referral. So, you know, is it okay for me to go ahead and share this information with this, you know, send your referral information over to this individual? Roberto?
So then, if somebody wants a referral, or if somebody wants to tap into this system, who else is able to get information from the system? I'm thinking, you know, there's been conversation about individuals in our community that frequent utilizers, that people even outside of the healthcare industry may need information just to improve care. So who takes access?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's something that we work with the counties on, is we have something that we call coalition sharing, meaning that, you know, looking at different organizations within the community that, you know, basically get a data sharing agreement in place with, so that, you know, maybe if they come into an entity, they can do a lookup on that individual and see like maybe where they were referred before, or if they've done. We do also electronic assessments within the system and so forth. So we basically work with the county to design that on, you know, who do we want to share this information with? You know, which entities are these frequent flyers going to? So yes, hospitals, but it could also be, you know, the local housing organization or others as well.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. And then finally, I just wanted to show that as part of this, the counties also get analytics. So you're able to see, you know, where are the areas of greatest need for your county? This is actual search data for the state of New Mexico. So this is a platform that's, you know, up and running right now. So it's not something that has to be built from scratch, we're just basically building more on it. But, you know, you could basically see, you know, what the top search terms are and areas of need, and also things like, you know, how are that, how is that changing over time? So you can see, you know, Food Pantry has really been at the top across the state. But, you know, as things happen like natural disasters and others, this is data that's uploaded every night, so you can see where those changes are. This is also something that HCA is going to be looking at as they, you know, work with counties to look at where they might want to make more investments around the state. I know we only had about 20 minutes, so I feel like we're kind of at the end of our time here, but I do want to see if there's, you know, any other questions at this point.
Okay, so you said there's no cost of onboarding, is that correct? It's either direct, the person that provides services or the individual, correct?
Yeah, basically, you know, we're listing free and reduced-cost programs that are providing direct services. So there's no cost for an individual to use it, and then there's also no cost for the county to stand this up, because HCA is actually funding it.
And then is there access to what type of insurances people have that are trying to access the services as well?
Not right now. That's a good question. I mean, I think that's something that we're working on in the long term, and, you know, maybe, you know, integrating with some of HCA's data and other things like that. But, but no, that's a little bit harder one to crack.
And then how is the system purged? How is the old information taken out? How often? There's providers that come and go, services that come and go. How is that purged out of the system if it needs to be?
Yeah, that's why we have our in-house data curation team, and it's, you know, their job to go through and keep this updated. So we also use technology where we're looking for any changes that might be out there, and pulling those in, and it creates a ticket for this team to go and investigate that. And then, you know, if a program is closed, get rid of that program, or, you know, make the update. Also, we, as you saw, we do have quite a bit of usage. Hold on a second, I'm trying to get to a tab here. One second. What I wanted to show here is that anyone also that uses the system can just click this button to suggest a program. So if there's something that's not in there, they can easily do that. And then also, when I'm in the system, I'm just going to go back here really quick. Anyone can also suggest a change really easily, and that then goes to our data curation team to make an update. So it's, you know, a multifaceted thing that we do. We also allow the CBO to, what we call, claim their account, where I showed that functionality earlier for inbound referrals, in that they can also make an update to their program listing. So it's multiple things that we have working at once to keep it as updated as possible.
Okay, and then we have a service here in our community Okay, and then, we have a service here in our community that's been here for several years, the Navigation Center that offers some of what's going, what this is about. How do you interface with other services that are in communities so that there's not redundancy or duplication?
Yeah, so is that group basically doing navigation for individuals? Or is that their role?
They're trying to help them find the services that you mentioned there on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we're definitely seeing that in counties that we're working with today. So, they're essentially, you know, using our system as one of the tools that they're, they have, right? To be able to then make those connections for individuals. So, you know, we've seen other counties also that have these navigation centers. And they now are basically adopting Find Help as a tool. Beyond that, we can also do integrations with your existing system of records. So, for instance, you know, we have different counties that might have their own case management solution. And we can do an integration with those so they're not having to go back between systems.
And how does it, how do you think it will work? That there's services not in the system or providers not in the system? And then, people are looking for other providers. How are people alerted to that maybe they have a patient going somewhere else? And how do you prevent certain things, confusion that can happen because of that? And records that don't follow people?
Well, I think you're talking more on sort of like, the healthcare side of things, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're mainly here, we do have, you know, some health type of listings. But, we're not necessarily intended to be a referral for medical reasons, like going from a hospital to say, like, a primary care provider. We're more focused on, again, like, the free and reduced cost. Basically, like, the health-related social needs or social determinants of health is more of what this system is focused on.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
How long has this been in existence?
Well, Find Help.
Chris, and, oh, sure, go ahead. I'll say that, yeah, this is a new program from the healthcare authorities. So, Find Help, it's a national organization. And they've done this in other states, in other counties, other organizations. But here in New Mexico, we just launched the Unified Portal, which is the Yes New Mexico Connect that Chris just showed. So, it literally has about 15 days that has been launched. And now, we are going to go to each organization to ensure that they have the information to participate in the program. So, it's in early stages.
But we have been active in New Mexico for a while. We have several customers already, even before starting work with HCA. So, you know, this has been going on for several years. And we already have, you know, close to a million searches that have happened on the platform across the state historically. So, again, it's something that's in place that we're just, you know, that's already being used very widely across the state that we're building on top of.
On the food program, you know, I see the housing instability, but the food insecurities, do you assist these people that are referred to the organization with an EBT card or something for them to go and buy groceries, or how does that work?
We basically will refer them to programs where they can get help doing that. Or we provide information on how to get, say, like, an EBT card. So, we do have, like, you know, food pantries, right, that are listed. But then, you know, if they're trying to get, say, a SNAP program or SNAP assistance, then we provide information on really, you know, how to go about doing that. Either directly with, you know, the state, or there's obviously other organizations that help with that as well.
I have a question. Are any of the tribal governments playing a role in this?
I'll take that one, Chris. Yes, we are hoping that every tribal government that is willing and decides to participate will participate. We are currently, the HCA is doing government-to-government relationships, ensuring that the governors of the tribal communities know about this. So, we are in the process of that. Two tribal communities are already very close to becoming the first pilots. That's Santo Domingo Pueblo, as well as Cañoncito Ban from the Navajo Nation as well. And then, as I mentioned, we are anticipating and hoping that everybody in the tribal community, every government that likes to participate can participate.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And one more thing, is there a live chat or a phone number that people can get support from this?
Yeah, I'll put my email in the chat there. And then, just if you're interested in, you know, a demo for your county or getting this going, then just send me an email. And I'm happy to, you know, get something set up with you.
Yeah, and I think, Chris, I think the question was more for like, are individuals going to be able to call a number? So, for example, the 988 crisis number, we have about like, 50, like, 50 people that answer the numbers. The 211s also already have, like, answering the calls from individuals. And then, of course, the crisis line. So, long story short, we are making sure that those services have access to this database and this ability to referral so that people can also call to those numbers and enhance, it's not to replace call centers, but instead to enhance their ability of connecting people with social services. So, there will be an ability for individuals to call into the numbers that they typically do with an enhanced capacity. I know we are at time, so I think we have been talking to San Juan County managers. We've done, I believe we've done a demo for them either at CloudCraft, other meetings. So, what are some of the next steps that we're asking? It's really, we want you to be informed of the resources that your county can have access to. And then, in coordination with the county manager, let us know of the support or not on this project and the willingness of San Juan County to join this project. And then, we'll continue to support your county, providing the technical assistance. And again, putting you at the driver's seat, making sure that what we implement makes sense for the county. That's really our main goal. So, once again, thank you for inviting us to come to this meeting today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martinez and Mr. Duncan for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Vedra, do you have anything else to add?
Madam Chair, I do not. But the only thing that I will add is that Find Help and Mr. Martinez have been working with San Juan County, Miss Callup at the Navigation Center. And part of this is to make sure that we have awareness of what's going on with the program, also for our providers. They have awareness. The program looks to be as effective as those that participate. And where we see some of the benefits is if we have a client going from one provider to the next, too often, we have situations where communication gets lost. And we had to start the process again. And hopefully, with this, the system will be able to be more efficient and hopefully reduce some costs because it's free of charge from the state right now.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Yeah, appreciate it. All right, with that said, then we'll go ahead and move on to Ms. Martin about the FY '16 Final Budget Resolution. Hello?
Hello, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I come forward today for your consideration of the FY '26 Final Budget Resolution Number 252614. Some of the changes that have occurred between the interim budget and the final budget is we added $4,274. Most of that is from additional grants that we've received information on that we've been awarded. And then, as far as the expenditures go, a majority of those expenditures are from PO carryovers or purchase order carryovers. And so, we have like, $7 million in PO carryovers. But then, and then the ones for the grants that are related to capital projects are already included in the 218 fund budget. So, those are not singled out, just so that you're aware. I did want to let you know that we have 24.5% of above-required state reserves of the 3/12th reserve. So, that puts us in a very good position financially for us to be able to move forward and be able to operate on a sound FY '26 budget. We have, let's see here, I lost my notes, they are. We have 36% of revenue that is generated by gross receipts tax. We have 33% of revenues that is from various grants received, which ranges from federal, state, and local grants. Our primary expenditures are capital outlay, which includes 30-year capital items that were due for replacement, and also public safety. The ARPA funds will begin to wind down as the bridges get completed towards the end of this calendar year. And then, also, the Total Water Waste Water Project. San Juan County is very fortunate to have the revenues and be in the position that we're in. And it's due to our conservative budgeting practices. As you can see on this spreadsheet that looks like this, the revenues, you know, you may ask yourself, why is our revenues lower than what our actuals were? It's because we do budget very frugally for revenues. We want to try and make sure that we are budgeting at a very conservative level so we don't wind up in a situation where our expenditures are exceeding the revenues and then we're winding up in financial trouble. The expenditures are sitting at $203,438,736. And a lot of those expenditures are related to capital outlay. And we will be spending down, excuse me, spending down our cash balances for those grants and the capital replacement reserve monies that we have set aside for those expenditures. And then, we also have our public safety of $77,769,809. And that's for our fire department and our sheriff's department. And we're very pleased to be able to provide them, you know, give them the salary and benefits that they do receive because they do do a very good job. And we're very blessed to have them. So, and I do want to thank all of the department heads and the elected officials for all of their support and us being able to pull this together. Without everyone giving me the information that we needed, I wouldn't have been able to pull it together. The final budget has to be submitted to DFA by July 31st. So, once this is approved, I will be submitting the final fourth-quarter report for FY '25 and the final FY '26 budget together. So, and that's per DFA guidelines. So, and I stand for any questions?
Well, thank you very much for this, Kim. And I just wanted to reiterate what you said about the 36% of GRT and then the 33% is intergovernmental, is grant. That's huge.
Yes.
So that we have that, everybody in the county staff, and I don't know who that is, but there's a lot of work.
It's a team effort.
Yeah. That takes a lot of time and effort, and that's awesome. So, I appreciate that. And then, of course, priority is public safety there. And, you know, I know there's a lot of people that bring this information to you, but thank you for you and your staff being able to compile this and make it into something like this that we can see as well as the book. And I understand the book's a little bit shorter now than it used to be by a few pages.
Right, we were able to, since the fire fund consolidated a lot of the districts, we were able to eliminate a lot of extra accounting lines. So, it makes it a little easier for budgeting, especially for the fire department.
Sure, yeah.
And I am very blessed to have the staff that I have. They work very hard and will do everything that they can to try and make sure that it's accurate as possible.
So, I appreciate that because, you know, it's important that we do wise spending. Not everybody, not all counties are as fortunate to have been wise with spending and saving and that. But we really are cognizant of our tax dollars here. And, you know, Ben Franklin said, "A penny saved is a penny earned." And it's every penny that is accounted for, and I see that happening with all of the numbers. So, thank you again for bringing this to us. So, yeah, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, then I'll need an action.
Madam Chair, in consideration of FY '26, the Final Budget Resolution Number 25-2614, I make a motion that we approve as presented, the budget.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Mr. Sawyer. And on the Resolution Number 242516, approving the purchase of property for a new Fire Station 6 EMS facility and amended purchase agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This may be a little bit of deja vu because at your meeting on July 1st, 2025, you approved the purchase agreement for vacant land at 1,900 Block Farmington Avenue for construction of the new Station 6 EMS facility. After you approved that agreement, the seller approached us and asked if we would, if the commission would mind, including in the purchase agreement, a provision that we would, that the county would design the building to a Northern New Mexico design standard. And that's to match another building that the seller intends to renovate on the property so that they would look the same. And I believe that Mr. Stark has checked with our architect on that and has determined that there wouldn't be a great increase in cost to do that. If Mr. Stark wants to talk to that, he can. So, the provision that I've added to the purchase agreement states, it's number three, buyer will reasonably collaborate with seller to design the building intended for the property to a Northern New Mexico design standard. Also, it's, we needed to, and this is something I forgot to do, so it's a good thing they came forward. In order to do the closing, we normally need a resolution to present to the title company showing that the commission has approved the purchase agreement. So, we also have Resolution 242516 approving the purchase of the property for the new Station 6 EMS facility. So, we recommend that you approve the resolution and the revised purchase agreement.
Okay, is there any questions or comments for Mr. Sawyer?
The only comment I have regarding this is, I'm not balking their idea of the design and everything, but just make sure we're not setting precedence for future sellers to dictate us what we're going to do with our property.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I don't think that this will obligate future commissions or this commission to include those provisions in future agreements.
And I appreciate Mr. Stark going back and verifying that there wouldn't be any added cost. And it's kind of nice to know they want some consistency in the design of where it is, given thought. I mean, we could always have said no or could say no. So, I appreciate you doing that.
Madam Chair, I might add, if allowed to, I did verify, as mentioned with Mr. Rodol, that this wouldn't be a negligible increase in cost for the project. So, our typical profile for an EMS facility is actually right down the street here. Block building with a metal roof. That's been kind of the standard, this project here, the one on Crouch Mesa. So, that was going to be the design standard for this project. The request here for the Northern New Mexico kind of territorial style of architecture would just switch out block walls with, you know, stuccoed walls and then a galvanized steel roof, so similar type costs there. The only enhanced cost would be the white-trimmed windows. He thought, like I mentioned, that was pretty negligible in cost. I did bring this request to the EMS Oversight Committee. You know, it's made up of the county and the three cities. And ran this by the other entities, because they all participate in the joint tax that funds this. Although, this particular purchase will actually be funded through the grant we received via capital outlay from last session. As well as the EMS officials and their team. And they said, hey, as long as this facility is still functional for our needs, the architectural style doesn't make a difference for us. As long as when the call comes in for us to respond, the garage door goes up and we go out. So, if you want to pretty it up, we're okay with that. So, I just wanted to share that feedback from you. And then, we did take that extra step of bringing it to our partners with the municipalities as well as the EMS officials.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, I need a motion on this, please.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 242516 approving the purchase of property. approving the purchase of property for a new Fire Station Six EMS facility and amended purchase agreement.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and second, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to number four, report on inspection of detention center. Mr. Sawyer.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, as you know, there's a statute that requires a yearly inspection of our detention center. And I always start reminding the commission that we need to do that. The last report was submitted on September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, so the deadline is coming up. We just need to get it done by the end of the year, the calendar year. So, I'm just reminding you, if you could get out there and look over, and there's a report that I think you fill out. If you could do that, that would be great. Thank you.
And we need to make a call, either the detention center or Brenda, to set up a time and date?
Madam Chair, you can make an unannounced visit at any time.
Oh, okay.
But if you'd like to schedule a visit with Mr. Webb and his team, you could certainly call ahead.
Okay.
But if you happen to be in the area on Sunday evening at eight P.M. and that's the most convenient time for you, we'll have one of our staff members give you a guided tour of the facility and accommodate whatever time works for you.
Say that again.
And they'll have forms first.
They will. We'll make sure the packets are available for you, and they'll go, our command staff that's on duty will know where to go to get those and provide those to you if you show up late on Sunday night.
Okay. And tell us one more time, Joe, when do we need to have that done by?
Well, I believe you would need to have it done by the end of the calendar year.
Calendar year.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we'll move on to reports from our county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Got a couple items for you tonight. I know we have a number of staff members that are going to come up and provide a report as well. The Four Corners Freight Rail feasibility study is complete. And I know you all were part of an email that was sent out to all of our stakeholders, sharing that good news, making sure folks were aware that that entire report is located on the project site at fourcornersfreightrail.com. Pretty hefty report, so good news. There's an executive summary that you can read that tells you that the project is technically and economically feasible and encourages the next steps to move forward, which, of course, you all are aware, we received a grant, one of the mini-grants that Ms. Martin was referring to, to further the project, both with preliminary engineering as well as the NEPA study. So, that project will start as soon as we go out to a request for proposals, which will be out on the street this weekend to find an engineering consulting firm to help us with that next phase of the project. And that's anticipated to take about two years, as I provided that update to you before. But very good news that that project, first phase of the project is complete. It was deemed that it's ready to move forward, and we can, we have the funding to do so. Looking at the San Juan Basin rig report that's put out, it used to be published on a more frequent basis, but still available. And I just want to report some good news, activity that we probably haven't seen in some time here in San Juan County. We have eight drilling rigs in the San Juan Basin, which, of course, extends beyond the boundaries of San Juan County, and thirty-three workover rigs working as of last week. So, it's nice to see some activity associated with the oil and gas industry again. And, of course, I think it's evident by a lot of the truck traffic that you see that shows that that portion of our economy is picking up. And I think that's positive news, and certainly it has a relation to our budget for FY twenty-six to know that there's some activity associated with that industry. You might recall in twenty-twenty, it was reported to us. That was the hundred-year celebration, maybe twenty-nineteen, the hundred-year anniversary of the San Juan Basin. That was the lowest point in the history of the San Juan Basin for production, adjusted for inflation. And so, we were at the lowest of the low not too long ago, and things have come back up. So, we're wanting to see that continue. We received, you know, we host a number of events at McGee Park. And one that in particular has been hosted for some time, Special Olympics. And we've really helped to facilitate that through the years. And I actually want to recognize, because this letter was directed to her, Ms. Michelle Murray, that was part of bringing that event back many, many years ago. And it's continued now in her role to help facilitate it. And it's a great, great event for our community. It brings a lot of people together from all parts of the state. And we received a very nice letter informing that Special Olympics is recognizing McGee Park, Michelle Murray, and the staff that helped put that event on. Outstanding work. And, yeah, just outstanding. So, she'll be recognized in the team August second down in Albuquerque at the Indian Pablo Cultural Center.
You're bringing that back to show us so we can see it?
I think so.
Celebrate with it.
She'll bring the award back.
Yeah.
I also want to extend some kudos. You know, we appreciate the comments you made about the budget and certainly a team effort. And I want to echo your comments, Ms. Martin's comments, regarding everybody it takes to push, put that together from our elected officials to our department heads, and then just implementing it and making it happen on a day-to-day basis. But also, with the budget was the approval of the compensation study and the new salary structure for San Juan County. And so, that was quite an effort that was undertaken to convert that in our current ERP system. And I want to recognize the teams from HR and finance, as well as IS, who assisted with making that a reality over a two-week period. That, as it always happens to work out, technology fails you when you need it most. And there's always some big bug or issue to work out. But all of our employees got paid last week, and a couple adjustments that need to be made, but not bad out of six-hundred-and-thirty-plus paychecks. So, I just want to thank them for their efforts because that was a lot of work and a lot of stress to make that conversion a reality. And thank you all for your support and our employees that I assure you are much appreciated of the new system and the increases in pay, so. And last item, I just want to make sure that you all are aware, and I know you are because you have packets in front of you, that the county fair is coming soon, August eleventh through the seventeenth in McGee Park. The staff down there, again, has been getting the park ready down there on Friday to see all the activity that's taking place to make sure we shine when we have ninety-thousand-plus visitors to the park during that week. You know, we're the largest county fair in the state. I don't know if you didn't know that. And I also want to make sure you know that it's not put on by us. I mean, certainly a lot of assistance from us and the team. But it's the San Juan County Fair Board that actually puts this on. And we need to recognize those folks, because that's a volunteer group
They do such a good job.
That puts on a great show for the community every year. And want to make sure that they're recognized. And also know that the place to go for information is samjuancountyfairnm.net. Mr. Neely will do what he normally does and make sure that our website is up to date. And when people are looking next week for fair information, they'll see a link on our page because a lot of people assume it's operated by us.
Right.
But we'll make sure we get them directed to that website, so. And we're looking forward to that week of fun, so. With that, it concludes my report. And I know we'll have some others presenting, but I'll stand for any specific questions you might have.
I don't have any questions. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Stark? So, and as we move into this next part, reports from elected officials and department heads, I just wanted to kind of give an update of what I was able to do as the New Mexico County's president. I was able to go to Philadelphia July tenth through the fifteenth. And that convention center is huge. It is huge. There were over four thousand attendees there. And so, they're from all over the country. And so, there was a lot of good networking. I also, in May, was able to go to the County Leadership Institute. And so, those individuals were there as well. And one of my fellow alumni asked me to nominate him as the second vice president. So, I got to do that up on stage in front of what I thought was a thousand people, but found out it was four thousand people. So, I guess I'm glad I didn't know. But anyway, and then also to announce the votes from New Mexico counties. And one of the things that the new president, J.D. Clark, he's from Texas, he got up with his guitar and sang a song to New Mexico, to NACO, National Association of Counties. So, that was interesting. He had a nice voice, and he did a good job. And he has very young children. So, that's quite a commitment to take on that role. But we heard everything at the sessions about human services and education policies. I know there's a lot of uncertainty about SNAP. There was a lot of frustration in the discussions over that. Challenges that we all faced. I thought one thing that was interesting that stood out to me that someone with unmanaged mental health care will tax the system forty percent more than someone without mental health issues. So, to me, that was a good number to come back and understand and glad we're doing what we're doing. As well as there was discussion of the future of using AI-powered therapy. So, and I've talked to some therapists in town, and there's been discussions about the pros and cons of that and the hallucinations that AI has. So, anyway, that's on the horizon. And there was talk about the criminal justice system and behavioral health. I also was able to talk to the group that I went to by invitation only about what we do here in our county and to have people ask questions. So, that was a good conversation. And then, what the keynote speaker was John Doran Boss. I don't know if anybody knows who he was. He played for the Eagles. He was a long snapper. And if you ever get a chance to hear his story, talk about mental health issues, challenges that he had. His dad murdered his mom, went to prison. He ended up in the child protective custody and ended up, just amazing story of the NFL success. And then, right as he had been traded to another team, they found out he had an aortic aneurysm. So, a lot of challenges in this gentleman is a motivational speaker. He's also a magician. One of his, the people that really influenced him growing up was a magician on TV. I don't know who this gentleman was. But this guy can do amazing tricks. And he was on America Got Talent. And I remember seeing him. I wouldn't have known that it was him had he not said that. But he lost to the girl, Darcy, who was the ventriloquist with the rabbit. So, he maintains a very positive attitude. So, it was great, and I got to see a lot of people that I haven't seen since DC. So, anyway, that's my report. And so, I'll go ahead. And does anybody up here, any elected official, have anything to say? Then I'll go ahead and invite our department heads to come up. All right, Nick.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Mr. Stark asked that I give you all an update on our two bridge projects that are in construction, similar to what I did the last time we all met. So, again, two projects. First, I'll start with the bridge on thirty-five-hundred, which is, or Road thirty-five-hundred, which is located in Floravista on Old Aztec Highway. That replacement structure is a concrete box culvert. So, since our last update, project has gone according to plan. Today, we poured concrete for the box culvert walls. The next three-week look ahead looks to be, concrete needs curing. So, there will be a period of time of concrete curing. We'll be diverting water back to the channel itself now that the flooring walls have been placed, following which we'll be forming the footers for the wing walls of the structure and pouring concrete from them. So, again, that project's progressing as it should. Again, happy to give you an update the next time we meet on the progress that's been made and what the next three-week look ahead looks like. On Road three thousand, that's a different type of structure. That's Southside River Road, otherwise known as. That project, or that replacement structure is a multi-plate arch culvert. So, different from a concrete box culvert in that the strength of a concrete box culvert comes from the concrete and the structure itself. Whereas a multi-plate arch culvert, the strength really comes from the below-grade foundation and the backfill that surrounds the culvert. So, we did hit some challenge in the last two weeks. We encountered some unsuitable material that needed to be removed and replaced. That's happening today and tomorrow. The excavation is complete, and we're backfilling with stone. Three-week look ahead, we'll be forming the concrete foundations. We'll sit upon the driven piles. That'll, again, pouring the concrete, which will need some time to cure. And then, initial assembly of the multi-plate arch culvert for, and the easiest way to describe that is a very large and expensive erector set. It comes in, you know, eight-by-fifteen-foot panels that are all bolted together on-site. And ultimately, you end up with a big metal arch that will be backfilled. So, hit a snag with some unsuitable material that's been resolved. And again, back on track, looking for, again, what looks to be some major progress in the next three weeks. So, happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. I know that there's been some things that have created barriers, and you've worked hard to overcome those. So, kind of Mother Nature hasn't cooperated with some of that stuff, and just...
We fortunately had good weather. It was Mother Geology that...
Yeah, and getting supplies in was not an issue as well?
Madam Chair, yes. So, the, when you're, again, the foundation for that structure sits on driven piles, which are steel, you know, H-piles, similar to what you'd see in, you know, like a roof girder or a roof girder or a joist. The process includes, so we do our initial engineering based on the best geotechnical information that we have that allows us to put a project out to bid. But final pile selection does need to be proven based on test piles. So, the test pile will be ordered based on, you know, the spec that we issued with our bid package. But it needs to be driven in the ground. Its bearing needs to be proven before we can order the remaining piles for the project on this one, our CBT total, which is a pretty small order in the pile-driving world. So, the original construction schedule anticipated roughly two-week delivery timeline. They're standard steel sections, but they do need some fabrication for what's known as a pile canyon. Took closer to five weeks, so there was some time loss there. Again, we've been dealing with some unsuitable material in the excavation. And we're also constrained by a very tight project site. Comparisons to the, you know, Penny Hills Bridge project in Farmington. That's greenfield construction. We're not dealing with fugitive utilities. They're not dealing with adjacent homes and driveways. Our contractors are working with what looks to be a wide trench, but it's a very narrow trench for what they're doing. So, that's some of the challenge as well when working in an established area like New York.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Nick, are they going to open one lane when they're able to do that, completing the rest of the project? I mean, just to get some kind of flow of traffic?
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, I anticipate it's going to be a full opening all at once. The way that structure is backfilled, you just do it all. And we're not talking significant delays as a result of that. You know, the backfill operations for that project should take, it's a matter of days, not weeks. So, once the structure is built, which has to be built in its full length, and the backfill requirements require you to come up in six-inch lifts, because like I said, you get the strength from that surrounding soil, we're going to backfill the whole thing, and we'll have two lanes of traffic likely as opposed to one.
You're getting asked a lot of questions, but thank you for that.
You bet.
And so, about what is the timeframe, are you thinking? Another month?
So, Madam Chair, first of all, you're, we got ourselves, you know, a little bit of a pickle by forecasting, you know, a closure timeline. You know, we issued it as a planned closure of four months. It's extended beyond that. As soon as I have a date, I will give it to you.
Okay.
I think is how I would rather answer that question as opposed to giving an answer that may change in two weeks.
Okay. And the updates of that are on San Juan County website, is that correct?
Indeed, Madam Chair. Devon has put together a website where every week we'll be publishing that three-week look ahead that I just gave you. So, it'll be, I mean, the next time we meet as a group will be in the middle of August, I believe. I believe. So there will be two updates to that website between now and then. And again, as soon as that opening shows up on the three-week look ahead, we'll be putting it on the website.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much.
You bet.
All right. Other department heads?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Ashley Pulte. I'm with the HR office and Mike's asked me to give an update on the summer internship program. So as you may or may not know, San Juan County partners with New Mexico Public Education Department to have a summer internship program where we hire high school students, well, juniors, seniors and recent grads. And we place them at different local businesses throughout the county. So this is a grant through the New Mexico PED, so there's no cost to us except for just our time in, in HR. So the program length was moved from six weeks like we typically do to an eight-week-long program this year. We had 164 applicants and we're able to hire 80 of those. Only one of the students dropped, so we had 79 that completed the program, which is a 98.75% retention rate. We had 37 work sites this year. And another thing we had to do, it was a stipulation of the state, was career exploration and financial literacy trainings. We incorporated more of that into our trainings this year. The last day was Friday, so we had the interns' closing ceremony at McGee Park and can't say enough of good things, again, about Michelle and her team over there helping me through all of that. The HR office actually had an intern as well. I believe you got to meet him at the beginning of the program, Martin, who took all the photos and the video for, at all, the work sites. He actually put together the slideshow that you're seeing here now. He did all of the intern spotlights on our social media page as well with the assistance of Devin and Tim. And during those work site visits that Martin and I went to, we got to meet all of the mentors who just had tons of good things to say about the students and the program. And we actually got to hear a lot of success stories of past years of interns who have been hired into the company full-time as an adult or gone on to other businesses who have taken them on full-time. So really preparing the youth for a future here to support the community. And then I've also had additional businesses reach out to me who want to participate next year. So because of all of the support, I'm going to be trying to ask the state for a little bit of additional money for next year to maybe get 100 interns instead of 80. So looking forward to that. And, and then I just want to stress that the businesses that we had and the mentors that we had really provided such a great environment to help the students grow and prepare them to enter the workforce. It wasn't just a free labor type situation, so they put a lot of work into it as well. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Well, thank you for the slideshow. It gives basis to who was there. And then for site selections, did they get to ask to go to certain sites or were they given ideas of what was out there?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, they, some of the students kind of had a transition from participating in an internship throughout the school year, through this, through the schools. And so yes, in that case, they would put on their application. They had participated at this particular site and wanted to move forward with them in the summer. So if the business was in agreement with that, we would try to place the student with that particular business, but there wasn't a guarantee in it.
Okay. And did speak, did any of the kids speak at the ceremony or did they give feedback of any sort or what did that look like?
Yes, actually Stephen helped with all of that. We, actually it was a really outgoing bunch this year. A lot of them did want to talk.
Okay.
So yeah, they all had a good, lots of good things to say.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. This is a great program. Any other comments or questions?
Do these students earn money while they're doing their internship?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, yes ma'am. They, we pay them through the grant $14 an hour.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for that report.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Vega, come on up.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, good afternoon. I, I want to provide the commission with just a, a brief update of some of the wildland fire activity that we've had in and around San Juan County over the past couple of weeks. And I'll, I'll go back about a week and a half. We had a new start on the, on the Barker Dome Mountain, just on the, on the Colorado side, in the Morgan Canyon area, if you're familiar with, with, with that country up there. It was all on U-Mountain land jurisdiction. That fire got pretty well established in Morgan Canyon. We assisted with the initial attack of that fire. Unfortunately, that did escape the initial attack and that went to a larger incident. That fire went to about 500 acres. An incident, incident management team was called in ultimately to, to manage that fire. And I just want to throw some, some job well done to, to Steve Dancy and, and his team and to Mr., Mr. Stark. We were able to host the incident management team at the industrial park for, I think they were there for three or four days.
Seven days, I think.
How many?
Seven.
Seven days in total to help manage that fire. And that was a really great location for their, for their ICP. That fire has been since placed in monitor status. It's 100% contained and controlled. No structures were lost on that. So that fire's pretty well put to bed. Fast forward to this Sunday, kind of a big fire day or busy, busy fire day in the region. I'll start down in the southwest corner of the county in Crystal, New Mexico. Navajo Nation had a fire just a little south of Crystal. That fire went to about 140 acres, all on Navajo Nation jurisdiction. Fire activity's pretty much laid down on that right now. They've got local resources in place and they're monitoring that. Fire looks really good. No structures lost on that fire. A little bit closer to home, up north, Sunday afternoon, just east of Ignacio, off of County Road 318, and that's the road between Ignacio and Bondad, La Plata County Road 318. They had a new start on Southern Utes. They believe it to be lightning caused. That fire made a really big push the first couple, two, three hours. It's sitting about just a little under 100 acres right now. There's a type-three management team on it. It was threatening a high-pressure gas line and some oil and gas infrastructure that was running in the area. Currently, fire activity's laid down. They're achieving some containment on it, so they hope to be turning that incident back to the local jurisdiction, probably in the next couple of days. About an hour into that incident, there was another new start north of Durango in the Rockwood area. That fire started as a structure fire that spread to the adjacent wildland fuels. Little bigger fire, that's about a 500-acre footprint right now. It was threatening some structures. There were some evacuations. They've since let those evacuations lapse. Still some homes up there in pre-evacuation status, but again, there's an incident management team that's on that fire. Fire activity's laid down. Yesterday, it did get established in a drainage, so they're having some trouble figuring out how they're going to get in there and pick up some of those spots in that drainage. But I know they're, they're hoping for some moisture over the next couple of days. So a lot will, a lot will determine the tactics on that, whether we get some, some rain or not. You know, this time of year, it, it is a little bit abnormal to have this level of fire activity. Usually the monsoons have set in or are well-established and we're actually coming out of fire season here in the Southwest. You know, unfortunately, those monsoons really just haven't set in this year. Maybe some shots of moisture over the next couple of days, but it, it doesn't look substantial. And then the 10-day outlook is, is calling for kind of a drier outlook. So unfortunately, we're in, we're in fire season for, for the foreseeable future. It is worth mentioning, you know, here in the region, we have an outstanding partnership with all of our federal, you know, local, state stakeholders. We have mutual aid agreements with all the fire departments within our region, both on the Colorado side and the New Mexico side. And usually that way that works, if there's a fire department that needs assistance, those calls for help are placed through our local dispatch centers and then we send a balance of resources. Obviously, you know, we want to make sure that we're not stripping San Juan County. So our first and foremost, you know, we have resources in place to make sure that we have things here, our area covered. But you know, if that bell rings, we'll send resources to those fire department for an operational period. If it goes beyond that, then we activate a larger kind of net or cast a larger net and we start reaching out to some of our federal partners and we go to the federal dispatch centers. So it is kind of a robust network for, for ordering resources across state lines and interdepartment, but those channels do exist there. As fire managers, especially during fire season, at the height of fire season, there's a lot of multi-agency coordination. So we're talking all the time with the Forest Service. We're talking with Bureau of Land Management. We're actually reaching out to our partners in Colorado and, you know, we're advising each other what resources we can start, you know, moving. And you know, a lot of times, we're playing a checkerboard game with resources, if you will, and, and that's just that level of coordination that we have in our, in our region and we're very fortunate to have those working relationships. I'll sum it up just very quick. San Juan County for the past 20 years, in fact, is a commitment to that, that coordination. We've hosted the annual wildland fire border meeting and that meeting is a meeting that we host here in usually February. And we bring federal, local and state fire managers from throughout the Four Corners region. And we have those discussions about how things are going to work during fire season, how we order aircraft, how we move resources across state lines and through different jurisdictions. And the reason we do that is because, you know, we don't want to be figuring those things out during the fire. So we'd rather have those handshakes out of the way and have those agreements in place. So just know we are monitoring things. We monitor things very closely. We are having those conversations, if not daily, certainly weekly with our partners in the region and we stand ready to assist when that call is placed. I appreciate your time and I stand for any questions.
Thank you for all your hard work and efforts because it's hot out there and fighting a fire and keeping track of everything that's going on. Do you know what's happening, anything different down in Roswell or Ruidoso since the flooding and fires that happened in Ruidoso? Has there been any updates? If you don't, that's okay.
Madam Chair, that's, that's a great question. I, I will tell you this, as it relates to Ruidoso in particular, whenever there's a large fire that's burned the landscape, burned up all the fuels, the federal agencies will, will bring in a bear team or rehabilitation team. And the idea there is that this team will come in and address those erosion issues. They'll look for areas that they, they suspect are going to cause flooding. They'll go, go into those areas, try to reseed. They'll put in water bars, reseed with grass, trees. They, they try to prevent that erosion as, as much as possible, but some of you in this room or on the counter, or in the chair or on the commission may remember the missionary ridge fire back in 2002.
That's what I was thinking of.
And all the flooding that occurred up there. You know, I think someone earlier mentioned Mother Nature. And unfortunately, when, when Mother Nature wants to get in the ballgame, she's, she's going to get in there. And so I know they continue to, to try to look for those opportunities to, you know, seed and reseed and try to get growth back in there in some of those areas that are barren, but it's certainly not, not easy.
Right. I get that. Okay. Well, thank you.
Remind me again, how many acres were on that Barker Dome fire total?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, the Barker Dome fire was 520, I think, was the final acre, if I recall correctly. And again, that fire is in a monitor, monitor status right now.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, I saw today in Bloomfield, a, looked like a one-ton, one-ton, maybe a brush truck had Wisconsin plates on it. What was that about?
Madam Chair, Commissioner McDaniel, outstanding question. We preposition, when I say pre, I, I talk about the, the greater fire community. During the height of fire season, the federal land management agencies and the state will preposition resources within the region. So for example, when it's our fire season here in the, in the Southwest or Southern Rockies, it's not fire season in, in Wisconsin. So we will preposition a lot of those resources here in our area for initial attack purposes. And when the Rim fire broke out and the Elkhorn fire up in Durango, those staged resources, you know, they're kind of a bolus of resources. So again, it's not just the local jurisdictions that are responding, it's those prepositioned resources that are responding. And it just allows us to get a, a lot of resources in that initial attack. So what I suspect that you saw today was a, a prepositioned engine that's here staged in our region for initial attack. It's worth mentioning, you know, again, that checkerboard game that I, that I mentioned earlier, we have an engine in California right now on a preposition in Northern California to assist out there. And again, that's, that's, that's the, you know, that's the, what we're doing during fire season is just making sure those regions are, are covered appropriately with resources. So great observation.
Thank you. I have one more question. Do you have any updated information on the fire that's just north of Guyana there in Rio Grande County?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, I, I don't, but I can certainly pull up the sit rep. I don't know what fire exactly you're referring to, but I'll, I'll certainly email you an update.
In Alredo, right there around, what is that, just in the vicinity of Abbey Q, northeast there? I can't remember what they call it, is the, the cap can fire.
I'm sure it's a fire burning on the Carson or the Santa Fe National Forest. Unfortunately, I don't, but I, I will certainly get some information and make sure you get that.
How many acres have been...
Outstanding, all right. This is the, the Luguna fire that you're referring to. That fire is about 17,000 acres right now. They're saying 78% containment on it, so it's, it's pretty well wrapped up.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Yeah, thanks, Devin.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief Vega.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Mestes, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Just a short update from the emergency management office, in case you've been fielding questions in regard to what does San Juan County do for emergency alerting? And what brought this up is I wanted to kind of remind you what we do in San Juan County and regarding the tragedy in Texas and the tragedy in Ruidoso in regard to the flooding. So just a reminder for you and your constituents, in case you've been fielding those calls, here in San Juan County, we use the Everbridge system for mass notification. That's the, that's the vendor that we use for the reverse 911. So in addition to that, we also use the IPoS system, which is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. It's similar to that Amber Alert. It hits all the cell phone sites in relation to the polygon that the dispatch center hits so that we don't hit the entire county. We can designate it in a certain area. So we use the IPoS system. And then, of course, we use the EAS. That's the tone that you see across the TV and radio. We use that system as well. But in addition to that, we also have a jick, thanks to our public information officer, Devin Neely. He's the chair of that, through our local emergency planning committee, the LEPC. We utilize all the PIOs within San Juan County to share these emergency alerts through Facebook and through Nextdoor. And in addition, the city of Aztec uses a Nixal system. The Navajo Nation uses Textinay and they use the Amber system as well. But with that, as the emergency manager, I, I wanted to inform you that I also sit around and ask myself, am I doing enough? Am I doing due diligence to the citizens of San Juan County? Because you read the alerts in Texas. Did they, did you use warning sirens and, and they're getting slammed in the court of public opinion and I don't want that to happen to our constituents and our citizens. So I convened our committee through the, through our mitigation planning and we've had a couple of meetings. And through those meetings, we decided to seek funding through our mitigation grant that, that's up for renewal at this time. And we're going to conduct a study to see if our platforms are being used correctly and what additions and what other systems that are out there that might be able to be in addition to help us. Because I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence for our citizens and that you're able to field those calls that, yes, our emergency management is doing their job in regards to citizen safety. And I'll be glad to stand for any questions.
So if it was like 2:00 in the morning, then it would be the reverse, the Everbridge or IPoS to send out?
Yes, depending on the emergency, Madam Chair, depending on the emergency, we utilize all those platforms. Definitely at 2:00 in the morning, we wanted to get the Amber Alert because people are going to be sleeping, they're going to be doing social media. But we'd also back those up on social media. This is why you heard that tone and here's more information. Because those alerts give you a limited amount.
Correct.
Limited amount of, of messaging. So we always back those messaging up by, by alerts.
Is there any need for the NOAA radios or...
Limited amount of messaging. So, we always back those messaging up by alerts.
Is there any need for the NOAA radios? Or do those, if they'd had those in Texas, is there any use of that?
Madam Chair, yes. As a matter of fact, our CERT team, we do, when we conduct CERT training, we do hand those radios out. And Commissioner Gonzalez will probably tell you that he just handed one last week.
I bought one on Amazon.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, those radios are pretty cool. You get them, and they notify you of when there's an emergency or anything like that. That's pretty cool.
So, there's these crank radios. And I'm happy to provide the Commission with those, because we do have them in emergency management. You crank them, and they send an alert down through national weather.
And there's a solar panel on it, too?
That's correct.
So, yeah, okay. Yeah, I have one, so I didn't know, you know, if it was something that people use, or...
Yeah, definitely. And those warnings were given by national weather in Texas and Riajoso, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are pretty cool.
Well, thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other department heads? All right. Mr. Webb, come on down. You may be the last or not, I don't know.
Definitely not the best for last.
There you go.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I just wanted to come up here. I felt compelled to add a question earlier about the annual inspections. And absolutely unannounced, perfectly fine. That's actually your facility. I just operated on your behalf. But I do personally appreciate spending time with each of you. And I would like, I'd love all five of you to come up this year. I don't know if we've done that in the past. We always get at least the three. But anyhow, I just wanted to put that out there. A little heads up so that I could meet with you personally is greatly appreciated, but absolutely not required. I challenge you to show up unannounced. You do not get a dog and pony show there. I mean, would you, what you see is what you get. And I know sometimes there's been some areas pointed out. We could use some paint, or maybe that could be swept up in the corner a little bit. But for the most part, it's a pretty tight operation. We're pretty proud of it. So, and it's, again, on your behalf. That's your facility.
I look forward to listening.
As do I.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
All right. Any other reports?
So, I want to make a couple of comments, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I've been, I've had one particular constituent that I've been emailing. She's apparently a little bit older and is needing help with the Everbridge. Everbridge and the Smart 911, getting signed up to get those alerts. So, it's my understanding that they're going to be doing that at the county fair. And if they can't make it to the county fair, we're going to refer them back to the Communications Authority, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Neil, certainly the Communications Authority. But even our office, I'm sure Mr. Mestes would offer to help folks sign up. It's available to them on the website. We can walk people through that, so.
Great.
But I'm sure the Communications Authority would like the opportunity to do that first, and I'm sure they'd be happy to do it.
I just want to push on Facebook about signing up.
Okay.
And all the Commissioners are signed up?
Will be.
We are now.
Good answer. We'd love to walk you through before the end of the day today.
Great, that sounds great. And one more thing is we want to give a shout out to Jacob Kuhn for being picked up, what was it, the seventh round Major League Baseball with the Tampa Bay Rays. Good job, John and Melissa.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're very excited for Jacob. He actually left. He was drafted on Tuesday and left on Sunday. So, he's already there. He's already working out. He's already got his feet wet with the whole process, and we'll see where he goes from there. So, we're excited.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Good to see you.
That's great. All right. Are there any other reports? I just wanted to add one more thing. The New Mexico County Board will be here next week. And this is the group that I'm the president of, that we set legislative priorities. So, anyway, if you see people out, it's going to be all 33 elected officials from all over the state. You know, just point in the right directions and be friendly. I'm sure you will. I don't doubt that. So, it's the seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
So, now, I'll go ahead, and we'll talk about public comment. Comments are expected in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the Commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comment or input from the general public. So, if there's someone here that would like to address the Commission, I'd like you to come forward now.
Madam Chair, Commissioners. Last time I was here, I was a little bit frustrated, but kind of got a plan.
Will you identify yourself, please?
My name is Dennis Walker. I live in Middle Mason, New Mexico. And I did hear back from the PRC. They did get with me about 20 days after. And I did hear from RJV. And I've decided to push forward with a former complaint through the PRC. I've documented everything that's happened to me and my wife on this sewer system from the 12th, or from September 4th, '24, until yesterday. Complied all this stuff, and it'll be sent off to the PRC. And on top of that, since I'm here in front of you all, you will get the same that the PRC does to keep you informed what's going on. I found through this endeavor that there's no communication between New Mexico Environmental Department, no communication to the county, no communication to PRC, no communication to Rural Water Association. So, I'm going to be that communication. And I guess we'll all be involved together. I want to thank the Commissioners for coming up and visiting my place and seeing firsthand what was, what I'm going through. And I'd like to take a minute and thank all the police officers that cruise our little area up there. I really appreciate that they're coming. That's pretty much all I have to say at this time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Can anybody else have any other comments? All right, seeing then. So, it looks like we're done for now, so I'll go ahead and adjourn.